Not.
Yeah.
Little food. It was little food. I think it was a broad.
That's all right.
That's all right.
Well, John, it's gonna be really interesting.
Well, there's a lot of stuff. I just.
Good evening, everyone. Do we have anyone here from the ministerial alliance?
We do.
Yes?
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you and we thank you that there are people willing to sit in administration of our city. And Lord, I just ask that you would give them the wisdom to know what the right decisions are to make to keep, continue keeping our city safe and to continue the growth of Ralla and to continue our effects on Missouri. We just ask that you would be with them as these decisions are not easy and not always popular. Give them the strength and wisdom to also withstand the lack of support at times. We love them and we thank you for them. We just thank you for all that you're currently doing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
To officially open a meeting with a pledge. Stan, would you lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge is to provide a nice place in America and to do good for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian's not on and.
What's that?
He's not on the blipper. Brian's supposed to be down this time.
Is Brian here or Rob here? Do we know, uh, we have two missing. Do we know if those council people are zooming in?
I don't know.
Okay. Three of them are. I'm gonna give it a minute to assess. Okay, we'll get through some of the administrative aspects while we're trying to get audio video set up. First item is a consent agenda. Consider approval of the city council meetings from June 7th and 21, uh, June 21st as well. First of all, are there any questions on those meeting, meeting notes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Carol, second by Megan. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? We have no public hearings first scheduled for tonight and we have no acknowledgements or special presentations either. Under report of mayor and our council reports of boards and commissions, we have nine of those listed. Are there any questions from any of those board or commission, uh, reports? If not, old business? Hear anything?
No, they just. I don't think it's gonna happen quickly. So we've got a quorum, but.
We got a quorum, but unfortunately, we have three or four actions tonight that I'm not so sure we'll know what those council people feel like. Is there a workaround with that?
Laurie, yes, the question is the podium system logged into Zoom, but I don't know that we've done that.
Rob always sets that up. This is just a code for the meeting that everybody does in a year.
No, not ours.
After a year?
I think the short answer to that is yes. The question is, this system is not.
You know, Deanne's not gonna be here. I think Jody was traveling and she wasn't gonna be able to.
Deanne usually, usually videos in. Sorry?
Thanks.
The meeting will be over by now. And it's a fiddly person for their broadcaster.
We're not gonna be recording. Thank you.
It should be recorded.
Thank you. We're waiting for the host to let us in the meeting.
What's that?
We're waiting for the host to let us in the meeting.
Okay. So is the prognosis favorable and quick or we're just groping around?
I've texted both of them and I've sent the link, so.
So they're responding?
Now it's connecting.
Okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
Are we working on the Zoom connection or the?
I think we're working on the Zoom connection.
Same connection to get in.
Yeah.
No, Brian said they'll be right there.
Brian. Is it Brian? I'm messaging them, neither one of them responding. What is his group number now? Have fun. Hey, can you get to him looking for counsel? It's just giving me, it's giving me a widescreen. It's not the normal Zoom connection. It's a widescreen. It's got a little invite other share screen, join audio. That's in my options. Yep, that's what it says. And it says recording. It says for, for purchase. Yeah, I can see on this side. Floyd's actually here in the meeting. It says unmute or share video, or start video.
So we should just go.
Yeah.
He was gonna take one quick look and see.
But when I click on it. And then unmute. Like I always do.
Yeah, they've got the ability.
It's showing that, which is. So how to put it on the other screens, drag it over? We're not seeing it on the, um, the, in the monitors in the council chambers. Good. It's not editing, drag it over, it's for the overhead.
Laurie, is Deanne on there?
I can't see anything yet to know who's here and who's not.
She'd have her name tattooed.
Okay, it's now taking it off the podium and it's showing it on the monitor. Deanne's on there. She is? Deanne's on there. Yeah, I can't see from the main, the main monitor.
I hear us.
Yeah, Laurie, do you have access, though, as if Deanne has a question and her voting, although we can't see it, could you see it?
There's a button on the. At this very moment, I can't see it.
Yeah, the same.
Um, just the monitors that are in the council chambers. I can see you, me, Floyd, and then it's like Deanne. On the two main monitors, but I cannot see at the podium. Which I guess we don't need to see at the podium, but. And that's how I keep, but that's how Laurie keeps her. Can Deanne hear us? Laurie's got the matrix hook up. Yeah, she's got the matrix hook up on hers. Yep, you did. Yep, Tina. Yep, thank you.
Stephanie gave me a thumbs up, but I don't know what that means.
She can hear us.
So it's not on any of these, but it's on that one?
Yeah, these are all blank.
And Deanne is online.
Okay, so Laurie.
Yes.
Can you hear her if she has a question and could you capture her vote if she votes?
Deanne? She's muted. Deanne?
Is she the only council person on?
Yes. Yeah, it's, he's gonna unmute her. What is it? It says, yes, I'm here.
I have my speaker off mute. Is it coming through?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, so moving on to old business. First item, item is an ordinance approving an interim agreement with Bird scooters. John?
Yeah, Steve and Darren had done the yeoman's work on this, the first interactions with Bird from a couple, three months ago and started with a conversation with the B-PAC or the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Since then, after presenting to council where they expressed some interest, we've been contacting lots of the adjoining communities. And Bird has been very aggressive in getting this out there across Missouri. So cities like Washington and New Haven and Kirksville and Columbia have all rolled this out in just the last couple or three months. And so talking with them, not surprising, we've heard, um, challenges, we've heard, um, opportunities. It's sort of been a bit mixed bag about everywhere they've gone. By and large, the, the thought has been, it's been more benefits than it has been cost. But again, it's new in these communities and I think even initially in Ralla, I think you would find a lot of maybe enthusiasm upfront and does that sustain itself over the months? We don't know. So what we propose then as a result of having conversations with the city council is to sort of scale back this agreement. And so based on a motion that the council asked at the last meeting, we're proposing to drop this down to a six-month term. I'll, I'll qualify that, that even though we picked that up in the, in the fifth whereas on page 5A3, we did not pick that up under the term. And so you'll see at your places, some suggested language that we would like for council to consider to amend section two. Uh, that makes it really clear that this is a six-month agreement. Leaves the right, of course, for us to extend that by a mutual consent of the parties or to, uh, enter into a new contract if we find some terms or conditions that we want to modify. But, uh, we would ask if you're gonna consider this tonight for final reading, that we make a motion to amend section two specifically. I think we've touched on all the key points here. Bird feels that we are being restrictive. Uh, they would much rather see a marketplace opportunity here where we're not limiting the hours, um, but we're proposing this from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We have, uh, in talking with university, they've made it very clear that they're not prepared to have them on campus yet. Mizzou went through all that in 2018 and then came back in 2021 and they are allowing them on campus. So I think there's a learning curve that goes, uh, with a lot of this, uh, type of activity or program. So, um, we did put agreement in place that doesn't have them paying the city anything. They do have to pay us for reimbursement if we have to haul their, uh, some of their scooters, um, in places that they are not responsive to. And if we take possession of those and put those in the storage, they've gotta pay a fee of $50 per scooter to reclaim those. We also require them to put up a $30 performance bond for the care of each of their units. And if we run into problems, we'll actually withhold or claim from that $30 fee, uh, per scooter. So if there's 50 scooters or 75 scooters, which is what they're proposing, uh, there'll be a deposit of $30 for each of those, again, for just extraordinary costs that we incur if they're not being responsive. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it. And I think that's probably the easiest way to progress at this point.
Any questions?
I'm sorry. Can I say one thing? So just so everybody knows, that phraseology that you have there, um, for the proposed amendment would go to section two term on page two. And I'm also gonna throw this out here. I, um, take out the word otherwise in that paragraph of the proposed amendment because it's kind of redundant would be my suggestion.
On the first line, disagreement less earlier terminated is provided herein.
A little redundant.
Gotcha.
You know, us lawyers, we wanna take words away.
You're typically charged by the word.
Right.
Any questions to start on this far? All right.
Okay, so initially, the response I got was somewhat positive, but over the last two weeks, I've really reached out to a lot of constituents. I reached out through the Ralla Downtown Business Association and just called multiple businesses downtown to get their point of view on it. And pretty much across the board, there's a lot of people who are not a fan of this right now. They don't, they feel like our community is ready for this right now. We don't have the parking in place. They're not allowed on campus at this point. So, um, after really hearing everybody's views on it, I feel like this may not be the time for us to do this. Maybe something we need to revisit down the road in a couple of years, once we've resolved some of the issues that a lot of businesses are having downtown as far as crime and things like that that they're really concerned about. So my feeling is we're gonna need to wait and get our community ready for this.
Okay. Megan?
I just wanted to say, you know, in, in the information that we have, it says that staff also solicited input from the Ralla Police Department, the University Police, MoDOT, and the Missouri State Highway Patrol and law enforcement, they express serious concerns. And so I feel like if we already have a lack of resources and then we're going to push this forward, um, and even with our city workers right now, you know, we're not really, they're not getting desirable wages as well and we're asking them to do more than what, you know, than what they should be doing. But I've talked to lots of people in my ward, I've talked to people, um, businesses, I've talked to people in, I think a little bit in every ward and it, people really aren't ready right now. And so with that being said, it's definite, it's gonna be a no from me, anyway.
I guess my concern is we have a Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, correct? So they go through these proposals and I, I believe the work that they do, you know, I look at the names on this and there are several, uh, there's a police officer on there, several other individuals that are part of our community. I, I think we're going to get to a point where we will see scooters in our community that people will just buy and go down the street. I mean, we have an opportunity here to regulate to some degree what, how they will be used in our community. It's a great opportunity to provide a service. Six months in this community is not very long. I don't believe that we will see, um, in six months, I, I believe that we could see the end result of this in six months. I'm willing to, uh, provide the citizens of Ralla another opportunity for something in the community to get around, so.
Listen.
Yeah, I like the idea that we're moving forward. Uh, I like the ideal of the scooters. What I said initially when we were talking about this is that I don't like the idea of us having it in the entire city. I would have liked to, to do like a little small section for six months and that would have made me feel a little bit more comfortable with voting for this. I didn't wanna open it up citywide. The university restricting was a concern of mine and I just would like to monitor on a smaller scale and then propose to open it up to the city. So that's the only restriction I have on it, but I, I like the proposal, I like the work that has been done on this. And I think that as my, as my colleague has said right here, that it is something that's gonna be coming. So we need to be getting ahead of it. We need to be having something in place to, to, to kind of regulate it, so.
Yeah, the thing to remember is, are these any different than a bicycle? And we have no restrictions on bicycles, so you have to wonder. Carolyn?
I had two things from the constituents. One was about the speed. The bikes have a, a top speed of 50 miles an hour and yet they're allowed to go on 63 and 72 and they have to be in the driver's lanes. This is going to really impede getting down these streets sometimes and/or cause accidents like, like. And the other thing was somebody had asked, um, let's see, it was, oh, if there was a, if, if there's a problem, just the average citizen, they come by and they see the scooter blocking half of the sidewalk going into business, whatever, who do they call? Do they call the police? Do they report, report to the business there or what, who did they actually contact?
Each, each bike will have a number on it and they've got a two-hour response time for those complaints. If they don't respond, then the plan is for Public Works to respond.
Does who respond? How do you?
You, I would call City Hall, quite frankly. I would call City Hall and it'll go to the engineering department and they'll work it through Public Works to move a bike that's in obstruction. Now, an officer could do that, but I think we've all recognized that officers.
Yeah, and they shouldn't have that responsibility. I totally agree.
And Public Works is planning to do that. So if the Bird Company through their third-party contractor is not responsive and timely, we will step in there and provide that. And if we have to recover that bike, then we'll hold it until they pay us the $50 reclaim fee.
So I heard you, you mentioned third-party provider a couple of times, but we didn't really talk about that. So Bird is based wherever. So are they gonna subcontract with somebody in Ralla or Phelps County to actually move these bikes, fix these bikes, charge the batteries and all that sort of thing?
Yeah.
So do we know who that is?
Not yet, but they've gotta provide that upon execution or upon, uh, operation. And the, and agreement talks a little bit about that. The other thing that Bird will do is that they'll sell bikes and then the owner of that bike can sort of roll it into that fleet. And then it also, almost in a way, allows an individual to operate like a franchise under Bird. So there's a lot of ways that they manage this in other communities, but that is an avenue that is available.
So there's a phone number on each bike?
Yeah, Bird's number will be.
So the individual would have to get that phone number and just, oh, whatever, okay.
Yeah. Or what they're gonna do is they're gonna calling City Hall and we'll take it through engineering, through to Public Works and respond that way. We'll reach out to them and if they are not responsive, then we'll take responsibility for it.
Laurie, does Deanne have a question or a comment? I can't see her on our screen.
It doesn't appear that she does. Deanne, did you have any questions?
They said the audio is still pretty bad on their end.
Okay, I don't wanna assume that she can hear us, so. Any other questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, Rob?
Yeah, um, I, I reached out a lot into my ward and beyond and, uh, you know, I'm kind of torn on this because on the one, on the one hand, this is, this looks like a really neat, innovative thing and I like that, I like that kind of thing. But I had a number of my constituents come back and tell me their concerns and the big concern that I heard was regarding insurance. And we, we had our attorney talk about it's already legal to, and that's not really the question, but if somebody's riding a scooter and hits a car and dings it, whose liability is it? That's, that's the question that I need to have answered if I can.
I think they're out of luck because, um, the person with the scooter, their auto insurance or anything like that, from my understanding, would not cover it.
But the person who's riding it, just like a bike, if we run, ride our bike into that car, that person operating it is liable. Now, whether they have insurance to cover it is the question with insurance premium, but that doesn't allow someone to damage property and not go after them. Now, you have to be able to identify who that is and be able to contact them and file a claim if necessary. They're just not gonna have insurance to cover it.
I would think it'd be hard to get money.
That's, that's my, that's my concern. And one thing I, you know, I think they're rolling this out in Washington, as you said, they're rolling out a few other places. And I think it's just been out for the last two or three months. Is that correct? For me, I'd like to, uh, let, see what happens in those towns and that, let them be the pilot, so.
Megan?
I just wanted to also bring back that, um, how they are saying that they want 50 to 75 scooters. So it's not, you know, you think about people having bikes or scooters, um, this would be on a more massive scale, so.
And I had some of the same concerns that everybody's mentioned, but again.
And I had some of the same concerns that everybody's mentioned, but again, going back, just like what Matt said, it's a six-month trial period. I think with anything, sometimes, you know, we think about or anticipate all the things that could go wrong or might happen or take place, but then we also need to anticipate what some of the benefits and stuff might be. And I think six-month period is a good time, you know, we're not locked in anything. It gives an opportunity for us and for the community to look and see if this is something that they do want to do. So I think the six-month period, I think that's a good, you know, a good idea. It's not like we're locked into it and it's something that we have to do going forward. You know, it gives us the opportunity to actually see it in place. I'm sure all of us have been part, you know, whether it's work or outside of work, whatever, something comes up and you're like, eh, I'm not sure if it's gonna work or whatever, and then you try it for a little bit, and you're like, oh, well, this does have a lot of benefits and something that I didn't anticipate. And it may be the same on the other side. We may find out there's even other issues or concerns that we didn't even think about that does come up, but I think a six-month trial period, I think is something that we ought to look into.
For me, it's also, you know, we were elected by, by the people to represent the people. And so in my ward, I'm just not seeing it. I'm not seeing anyone. I haven't got one response of someone who wants this, so I just have to go with that.
And I agree with you. But a lot of times, the folks that are okay with it don't reach out to us. I mean, we have a lot of citizens in here. A lot of times you hear, whether it's a business or even with this, you know, I get contacted for things that people, you know, have concerns about, but a lot of people that don't have those concerns also sometimes just don't reach out, and so.
Yeah, I made it a point to reach out to everybody I could think of in my ward and downtown. Yeah, I must do that.
And that's awesome, I'm not, I'm not taking anything away from that at all, but there's no way we can reach everybody.
Right.
And, you know, and we gotta also, you know, represent those as well.
Terry?
So if an individual already owns a scooter or intends to buy one, because I have seen some, you know, around, are they, do they have to follow the rules of bicycles, same rules of the road as bicycles do? Just in general, as a scooter?
As a motorized bicycle, so it'd almost be more.
Like an automobile.
More like a motorcycle than it does a bicycle. It's a hybrid.
Well, I'm just wondering, is, okay, so if we already have them in the community, a few, that people are, individuals are riding and doing whatever, this really only pertains to the business and what those scooters will be, you know, what they'll have to do with that scooter use?
That's correct.
Because otherwise, if somebody else owns it, they'll just kinda ride it and do what they want. Okay.
Yep.
Just kind of a question.
Ironically, they could probably ride it on campus.
Yeah, probably, if it's, if it's an.
As an individual?
If they haven't said that you can't have any of them there. So this is specifically for the business of.
It allows that business to place 50 to 75 of them under some guidelines that, you're right, an individual wouldn't be subject to those same guidelines.
Okay.
If there's no other, go ahead, Matt. I'd just still go back to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I feel like we ask people to serve on those types of committees and ask for their input. I realize we cannot get feedback from every single person in our ward. There's no way for that to happen. But we ask people to serve on these committees, and then all of a sudden, it comes to us and we just say no. I worry about that component. You know, as someone who's served on several committees, you know, you put in your time and your, and your effort to make sure that you make the best decision for the community. And I think it's important to listen to what they've asked for. I drive many of the city streets, and there are bicycles around. I have not had a huge problem with bicycles in this community. In fact, most of them are more than accommodating to me as a, as a driver. So just saying no to this right out, out the gate, I think six months is not very much to ask for. I have no skin in the game, I'm not getting on one, I'm too old to ride one of these things, but I certainly feel like it might help some individuals in our community. We've seen the price of fuel going up, and it could only continue to climb. If this helps individuals get around in our community, I'm all for it.
I don't think committees elect you, though. I think it's the people, so we have to weigh that in.
Mariah?
My comment is, you know, I'm on the Bicycle Committee, I'm new to it, but what I voted for was that we're gonna vote that we should bring it to the council and see what the council has to say about it. We didn't necessarily vote that, oh, we think this is a wonderful idea. My vote was, let's bring it to the council and ask our constituents, and then we'll go from there.
Right. And those advisory committees, not all of them, but that one probably doesn't get a lot of public or citizen input as well into those decisions, so.
Okay.
Okay, so first step first. What we would like to request is a motion to, at least before we vote on, have the final reading, vote to amend the ordinance, proposed ordinance, to reflect the six-month language that's in front of you.
Lister, fourth, Ward three, slow move.
Is it a motion or a second?
Second.
Who was the second?
Steen.
Victoria, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. May we have the final reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor's city of Rolla, Missouri to execute on behalf of the city of Rolla, Missouri, a certain interim agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Bird Rides, Inc. as amended.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Steen?
Yes.
Murphy's absent. Higgins?
No.
Renad?
No.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Lyons? She's responded yes. Are we gonna accept that by texting? We don't need to hear her voice, Toby, is it okay?
Yeah.
Johnson?
No.
Kessinger?
No.
Florence?
Nay.
Is that a yay or a nay?
Nay.
Hey.
Fredley?
Yes.
Everly's absent. Have a tie, five and five, two absent.
The tie vote?
It is, but I don't think it will carry. We'd need seven yes votes.
So motion fails for, so John, explain that, so that council understands.
Yeah, pets of passage.
A minimum number of yes votes.
Of the total of the city councils. We need seven twelves to pass an ordinance, or six and six, and the mayor breaking the tie to be the seventh. So without seven yes votes, an ordinance fails.
So we have four of them, but we don't want to pass them.
Right.
Right. So stated another way, the bar to pass an ordinance is higher than 50/50 of those present.
Right, so the, yes, so the full entire body?
Yeah.
Now, you could, you couldn't vote to break the tie to just show your support one way or the other.
I'll save, I'll save that. Where's your card? Where's your card? Moving on, second item is an ordinance approving, or I'm sorry, an ordinance rezoning 2141 Old St. James Road. Tom?
Yes, this is a request to rezone from the M1 Light Manufacturing and M2 Heavy Manufacturing zoning to the GI Government Institutional zoning. These properties are actually owned by the city of Rolla. They are developed with a recycling center and fleet maintenance, and as we heard at the last meeting, a public, the Public Works Department is planning on building an additional building on the north property. As I said, the properties are currently zoned manufacturing, but they are owned by the city. Street View looking from McCutcheon at the recycling center, looking from McCutcheon again toward the fleet maintenance building. So just to summarize, a government use is consistent with the comprehensive plan because the city owned those properties when the comprehensive plan was, was built. Additional development of the property is planned, that's the Public Works building. The current and future uses are planned to be the government uses, the city's planning on retaining the property for, you know, for the time being. A GI Government Institutional zoning is the most appropriate zoning for the property when it's owned by the, by the city or any other government, and they're planning on retaining it for governmental uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request with a vote of six to zero. Did you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom? If not, can we have the final reading?
An ordinance to approve the rezoning of 2141 Old St. James Road and 2301 McCutcheon Drive from the M1 Light Manufacturing and M2 Heavy Manufacturing District to the GI Government and Institutional District.
Is there a motion to approve?
Lister, fourth, Ward three, slow move.
Motion being by Lister, seconded by Carolyn. Roll call vote, please.
She responded yes. Mayberry?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Renad?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Everly's absent. Florence?
Yay.
Fredley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tenice?
Next item is an ordinance adopting the Schuman-Burwan Neighborhood Plan. Last meeting, I was a little bit hard on Tom, but he rose to the challenge, and he took that in stride, and I think he's presented, you'll see in your packet, a very nice addendum to address some of those concerns. Tom?
Yes, I believe I left, left you wanting for some answers at the last meeting. So you'll notice in your packet, prepared a additional document, we'll call it the Schuman-Burwan Plan Addendum. This is to answer some of the questions a little bit more directly and in more detail from, that were left at the last meeting. These are some things that perhaps might be a little bit more detailed than is necessary in the plan, so this is just kind of a document to help get through this meeting and give you a better idea of what is, is planned. So we'll go through that. Just to remind you, this Schuman-Burwan neighborhood area is the area north of 10th Street, kinda south of 18th, kind of west of the Burwan Park, and sort of east of Pine Street and the areas around the campus. So the first question kinda came up was about funding. Just to be real direct, there isn't any funding allocated for any of this. Basically, as the years go by, there'll be perhaps some needs for some, budget time to kinda discuss these things and weigh this against the priorities of the city at large. There are some things that may be able to get some grants for, there could be some matching funds that are necessary for some of those types of grants. And then there's a lot of things that just require staff time, that doesn't really require any budget allocation for. Next thing was kinda some discussion about what to call the action plan and those things that are in it. We kinda landed on just kinda calling it phasing, and groups of different things are included with, with each phase. There's kind of an immediate term, these would be things that we'd start on immediately, and then next, move on to phase two, and then phase three and phase four, as time goes on and as, as things are accomplished. Some of the first things that we're gonna look to do would be establishing a neighborhood watch. This is actually already started, I believe, last week. Some of the neighbors met with the police department to kinda get that kicked off. So that should be happening pretty soon already. It's been being talked about for a couple of years now, actually. Next thing would be code violations, like to go through the neighborhood and kind of do a whole neighborhood sweep. So, you know, right now, there, there's a lot of things out there and kind of generally respond based on a complaint basis. So what this would be is actually go block by block, street by street, and see what you can see. Instead of doing the normal process, which is kind of, you know, kinda mean, saying, you gotta take care of this, you know, immediately, you're gonna get in trouble. The idea, I think, could be to take a little bit of a nicer approach to it and say, hey, we've noticed this issue, you know, contact us. Well, you know, we'll talk about how long you need to, to address it. We'll give you, if there's some sort of issue, like, for example, that they can't afford to fix it, or they're unable, physically unable to fix it, those types of things, we're gonna work to provide assistance to take care of these things. Part of the reason why is, A, this'll prevent the, you know, you're picking on me type thing. If we're going through the entire neighborhood, nobody can, can think that they're being picked on or singled out. And then next, I believe there are some people out there who may kind of, for lack of a better term, kinda step up their game if they see that their neighbor is, is stepping up their game. Kinda could kinda become a, you know, let's all tread outdoing one another and improving the neighborhood. Next was some discussions about what to do about the zoning code and what exactly that means. So really what we'd be talking about is perhaps an overlay zone, that would be kind of a special zoning area that just applies to this area of the neighborhood that may have some, some differences of what the zoning, underlying zoning would allow. So for example, there's been a lot of talk about maybe a height limit. People are uneasy about having a three- or four-story building next to their houses, so maybe in this area, I'd say, you know, no more than two stories. Those types of things. Some discussion about having a new zoning district, we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Then maybe some needs to change, for some changes in the setbacks, the open space requirements, lot size, density, height, as I said, requirements, and then maybe some basic design requirements. Let me give you a real-life fake example. Had somebody come in just, just last week to ask about redeveloping a property in this plan, it's in the area that's near the campus, that's already zoned, R3, which is our highest multifamily zoning district. So they wanted to know, what could they do with their property? They had a duplex on the property, what can I do with my, my property? The answer was not much. Even though, as I said, the R3 district is the highest zoning district, all they can have on that property is a duplex. And in fact, because of the lot doesn't quite meet all the requirements, they can't even build a bigger duplex or expand the duplex. All they could do was tear it down and replace it with a duplex to the exact same size and same number of bedrooms and all that. So unless they get a variance. So what we'd like to do is kinda take a look at the zoning, and the goal is to allow for the things that you would like to allow for. So for example, the goal is to get towards some, to allow for something like this, maybe if they could tear it down and replace it with, say, a four-bedroom, no, a four-unit townhouse that's closer to the street. Maybe it'd have eight bedrooms, have the parking off the alley, have maybe some, you know, maybe, you can imagine, you walk down the street, and there could be some porches and some trees and those sorts of things. Anyway, that's, that's what we're trying to get toward in this area. There was a lot of discussion on parking, and I'll admit that I probably let that go to an area that did need to get to. Really, what the plan talks about is how to address some of the parking issues, and some of the ways that it talks about is, perhaps there is a need for some permits for the people who live in the area, so we know who is supposed to be there and who isn't supposed to be there. Perhaps some timed parking, although that's, you know, that's controversial. Maybe a need for some public parking, additional street parking, and then a lot of encouraging for more parking on the alleys. If you have parking on the alley, then it's not, you know, it's not visible to you quite quite as much as if it's in front of the house. There's also some language in there to encourage what's called decoupling. What that is, is, so normally when you rent an apartment, you, it comes with a parking space or a parking lot that you can park in, just as a part of renting your, your apartment. So what decoupling is, is to kinda separate the two. Say, you rent your apartment, if you want a pass to park in the parking lot, then you pay an additional fee each month. So what this does is encourages people to think twice about whether or not they need to have their car, or it allows for somebody who doesn't have a car to pay less, so they would be encouraged to go to that apartment complex, those sorts of things. It's a kind of a soft way to encourage people to not have their car. And then, at some point, there'd be a need to talk about, in a little bit more detail, about the possibility of reducing some parking requirements. Like, as the example I just brought up, I guess, and for example, it looked like an appropriate amount of parking, there were six spaces proposed in that example, there were eight bedrooms, that's pretty close, right? But the, the parking code actually still requires eight, because there are two-bedroom units. For a three-bedroom unit, it's .66 per bedroom, but for two-bedroom units, it's, it's one, it's, two, two spaces are required. So just eliminating that, that line would allow for, as I said, there'd be, there were six parking spaces there, but then there was also along there, street frontages, that particular. It's a lot more complicated than removing it. Zoning, there was some discussion about what exactly it means to change the zoning of some properties. This, I'll, I'll remind you, is the, the future land use map that kind of showed here in this area, there's going to be some higher density in this area, some medium density and so on. So what did that mean? So what I've tried to do is kind of show on this page what that kind of would mean. What, what may be proposed is a new, we'll call it an R4 zoning district. So right now, R3 is the highest multifamily district, so maybe we need to create an additional one, call it R4. And that would be for this area on the west side of the railroad tracks. We need to rezone some areas to the, we haven't just, don't know exactly which commercial district, but it could be C1, C2, or C3. There are some areas that are zoned manufacturing, and so perhaps need to look at rezoning those to a commercial zoning district. That's, that's the areas in red. And these areas are areas that are currently zoned R2, but are actually in areas that are recommended by the plan to be a higher density type zoning. So these would be areas that might be recommended to be rezoned to the R3 district, so it'd be an upzoning. And finally, this triangle, I mean technically that would be a downzoning. There was a lot of discussion about whether there's, something is an upzoning or a downzoning and whatnot. This triangle would technically be a downzoning because it's currently zoned R3, it's in the area that would be recommended to be kind of a lower density type, type zoning, and so it'd be recommended to be rezoned to the R2. That's, the lines and all that is up for discussion, of course, there'd be a lot of discussion with the property owners, see if they're okay with that, and there'd also be a need for allowing for people who have plans in motion already to kind of move forward with those plans before there was downzoned. And then, there's a lot of discussion about this overlay district, so the overlay district might be in this area in, in blue, that'd basically be most of the areas on the east side of the railroad tracks. And as I said, the overlay district can consist of some modification of the height requirements, could eliminate, say, the lot size requirements, because that's a big issue in the area, you can't develop without getting a variance because of the lot size requirements and those types of things. Then the next, the next, one of the next things we'll be working on over the, you know, as an immediate task, could be to kind of try to start addressing a lot of the petty theft. That's kind of an issue that came up with, you know, people stealing things off the, off their porches and just out of their backyards and all that kind of thing. So the idea would be basically to work with the police department, maybe develop some flyers to pass out, work with the neighborhood watch, so perhaps maybe if somebody is kind of patrolling the neighborhood and they see something that looks like it would be easy to steal, maybe they leave a note on it and says, hey, you know, by the way, you left this out, you should probably think about not doing that. Street widening, there's already plans in motion to widen a section of Elm Street, this is the street that's one block east of Pine Street, because Pine Street is planned to be rebuilt, so Elm Street is, is proposed to be widened just a bit to accommodate moving the traffic to, as a detour while Pine, while Pine Street is being rebuilt. So that's already in motion. And then finally, next thing would be to start working on kind of trying to start a neighborhood organization. The idea is, is to try to get a group of interested people in the neighborhood together and then they would kind of assist in getting people together for cleanup activities and organizing events, and maybe they could do a newsletter. The general idea is to sort of set the wheels in motion so that this neighborhood organization would, would guide the direction of what happens in the neighborhood, kind of going forward. And that's what I have. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question for you. I think everybody on the council had an email from a gentleman that lives in Ward 1 and he's disabled and he said that he has ramps, like a ramp going from the front of his house, and he said it's in horrible shape. And I can't believe, I can't remember the organization that had helped build those ramps, it was Tri-County. But is there something that you know of that you could?
Well, all I know is, right now, that's the type of thing that
That you're looking for.
Those types of projects are things that we'd like to find some help with. I did have an organization reach out who's in this neighborhood, it's that alcohol rehabilitation place. They have, they have a desire to make improvements in the neighborhood, so they'd love to have their people go out and do things for the goodwill and experience.
Yeah, I drove, I drove down his road, he said it was Martin Street, and there's several houses, probably like five of them that have ramps that are falling apart. All volunteer. I don't know how to build a ramp, but I can hope.
Any other questions for Tom? Thanks, Tom, for clarifying a lot of those issues. Final reading, please.
An ordinance adopting the Schuman-Burwan neighborhood plan as an element of the Rala 2020 comprehensive plan updated 2005.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Carolyn?
Second.
Second by Rob. Roll call vote.
Boland?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Ridley?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Murphy's absent. Lyons?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yay.
Beverly's absent. Renad?
Yes.
Tenice.
Vote is approved. Moving on to new business, first item, only item is a consideration of an ordinance enacting abandoned building registry. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Council asked us to look into this about a month ago, and so it's being submitted as a discussion item, and if council is comfortable or prepared to move forward, if we can do a first reading, or you can take more time to deliberate. So we just really wanted to follow back up to that request. And I started off with just looking at the statute in Section 67.399, which is included in your council packet, gives the statutory authority for this kind of a program. And there are a few cities that have enacted this, but not as many as I thought. Jeff City was the one that we found most successful, they've really touted it as, they would call it a limited success. They made sure that people understood that this didn't eliminate abandoned derelict properties in town. This put more light on those properties and it gave an assurance that both the codes and the police department had a list, an active list of properties that they would regularly then inspect. So it's a bit more proactive way of doing it. The statute's written in such a way that it limits the capacity of what the city can charge. So it talks about this being for residential units, and then there's a strange wording about commercial structures as long as they have a dwelling, multiple dwelling units. We take that to mean certainly commercial apartments, but probably that could even be applied to hotels and motels, it would seem to me that that would qualify as a dwelling unit, some of them are often long-term stays. The law does limit the amount that we would charge to no more than $200. I did find cities that were charging less than $200. We're proposing, if the council's interested in doing this, because we would really commit to doing a proactive following up on both codes and law enforcement, the $200 semiannually or 400 hours a year would be a reasonable price for what's going to be involved with maintaining the registry and then doing this monthly inspection, or more frequent if we're running into some issues. So this really identifies properties that would have been vacant, vacant for a longer period of time, the law says six months, and then has other structural or neighborhood issues, whether that's disconnected utilities, whether that's persistent code violations, whether that's loitering or vagrancy. So as long as it meets any two of those criteria, it would then qualify as needing to file this registration with the city. We would expect people to contact us if the council passes, passes this, but if not, we'll actively send letters of notification to properties that we believe fall under this definition. Codes has been doing some work on this over the last year anyway, and they think there's about 40 properties or more residential that would fall under this registry. That's quite frankly, double what I thought we were going to have out there, but 40 properties is not an insignificant area. We do have those all plotted on a map, but I, I don't have that with me, but, I don't know, Steve, did you have that plat here?
It's up there.
Okay, so if anyone's interested, stop by, we'd be happy to show you where those are located. Not surprisingly, they're in the two older areas of the community, they're in the Schuman-Burwan neighborhood, as well as the area that we would like to tackle someday as a neighborhood plan, and that's really from 72 up to 6th Street. Those two are the older established neighborhoods in the community and certainly have many viable rental properties and single-owned properties, but they have lots of properties that have been in transition for various reasons. So again, I think it's worth noting, the council can do this, I think it would give us some, some transparency, some light on these properties, but I, I think it's worth saying, I don't think it's going to solve the issue. We're going to have uncooperative property owners who are going to have to be hounding, and this provides a mechanism that we can either go to court to prove that they are abandoned structure, place liens on them, if one's deemed that way and, and require that payment, but I don't think this is everyone going to be jumping up and voluntarily doing this. This is going to take some persistence and work on our part. Hopefully, one of those things at 400 hours a year that's going to take that little push to get them to come in and either demolish the structure or get a building permit and renovate. And they can't get a building permit until they go through a series of requirements under this ordinance, so that's one of the things that we have some leverage on. So just wanted to present that as a discussion item and then happy to answer some questions.
We'll start on this end. Victoria?
I have some concerns about this ordinance, actually. So on the Missouri rise statute, the very first line, it says, "The governing body of any municipality or county with a charter form of government and with more than 1 million inhabitants." As far as I understood it, we are not a municipality or a county that is a charter city with more than 1 million inhabitants. So how can we actually legally do this if we don't meet those requirements?
Yeah, so, so there's two clauses, right, with that or. It's, yeah, either satisfy either one, it's a governing body of any municipality, and Rala is a municipality, third-class city is a municipality, or it's a county with a special charter form of government with more than a million inhabitants. So either of those become qualifying entities in which to enact this. Now, there are limitations that go into the ordinance as to what that really means, but we would fall under the municipality clause there. And again, the distinction is that or. Had that language said and, and you'll find that all throughout statutes where there's an and or an or, this could say the governing body of any municipality and county, charter county with a million inhabitants, that million inhabitants would have applied to the city, to the municipality. But there's a distinction with that or, that as long as either of those things are satisfied, you can enact an ordinance under that provision.
I'm going to have to disagree with that one, but I have other questions as well. So as far as, you go to Section 661, under what it means to be an abandoned building.
Victoria, I have a hard time hearing by the mic. Section what?
661.
661.
So what if this building, per se, like for instance, I talked to someone today who has a buddy that has a house in town that it's abandoned, they're not living in it or anything like that, but the, I guess they had rented it out and that person's been working on it for two years. Would that be considered abandoned?
We'd have to look at that definition. So if it's secure, if there's not vagrancy occurring, if the utilities are on, then it wouldn't fall under that definition. So again, it has to meet two of the criteria that are in subsection two there. So without knowing a particular property, I couldn't really say what two sections between A and I it would fall under. So, but it would have to meet two of these requirements. And, and again, this is proposed for council consideration, council could say, as long as it meets one of these criteria, or it meets four of those criteria, the council has the discretion to establish what becomes an abandoned property.
Okay. I'll go for a house specifically in my ward that I, I'm interested in getting at some point, if at all possible. They, I've spoken to the owner, I guess her father had passed and they're working on a state right now, the house itself has been empty since the 90s, but you can tell no one's there. So since they're working on their estate and they do plan to sell it, what about them? That, I mean...
Let me just ask one thing. I hear what you're saying, but I would say that people should be able to secure the property.
Okay.
Now, maybe you can't finish it, maybe it's a work in process, but I think what the community's after here is at least make it secure.
Section, let me see here, Section 662 under registration, the second and third sentence, I'm a little confused here because it seems like they're contradictory to each other. In the first sentence, it says, it seems to say the city will send notice to the property owner and they have 15 days to take care of it, but in the second sentence, it seems to say that the city will not send prior notice. Is that just a misstep?
Well, it's, and we do this on a few other provisions, when a law takes effect, it, it applies. And we're saying the city's failure to provide you notice isn't an excuse for non-compliance. So yes, we would make every effort to reach out to the property owners, we would do a history check, but if we fail to do that completely, that doesn't allow someone to sort of get a, get a jail-free card, so to speak, and that this, this requirement of registration wouldn't apply to them. So the onus, if council adopts it, the onus is on the property owner to register, we will make all of our efforts to notify them, but if not, it doesn't relinquish or release their responsibility of complying.
The very next section, so a lot of these things that the city would require for registration, you can actually get at the county assessor's office, it's public information, so I'm, it seems redundant to have a second source to get this information, when we already can get it, to me. And then...
I'm not sure I understand that. Could you just elaborate?
Well, why would we need two places to find this information when it's already public? What's the need to have a second source?
Okay. And the relevancy of that?
I just don't see the point of it. I don't see the point of having two places to go, when we can already have one that's public.
Okay.
Section 664 under registration, under Section A. I'm a wee bit confused here because it says, "An owner of an abandoned structure, whether it's registered or not, will be paying that fee." I thought this was only for buildings that would be on this registry. So are we just taxing anyone for this?
It kind of goes back to the other provision, so they've still got the responsibility to register it. If they don't register it and we end up catching them and forcing them either through court or through a lien, then they've still got to pay that fee. So we're really saying, whether they've initiated the registration or we're having to pursue them for the registration, for the filing, then they, they pay that fee accordingly.
Okay. So... Under 667, I have a question about that because it seems to me that would be in violation with the Fourth Amendment about entering someone's home without a warrant.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'll have to defer to legal for that. We would certainly be more comfortable having administrative warrants before we enter property. I don't have a good answer for that one. If that, legal will look into that one a bit further.
I guess that's all the questions I have at this time, but I don't think this is a good idea. I think we should look at another option to deal with this. I think this could be seen as a little bit of government overreach and we should not do it. In fact, I've actually been looking into this a little bit and I found something that Missouri does, and it's a community development block grant where we can get grant from, I believe it's Missouri Development, and...
You want to use taxpayer money to fix these places?
Yeah.
Is that what you're suggesting?
I don't have all of the information about that particular program yet, I am waiting on to hear back from them on it, okay?
Okay. So a community development block grant is taxpayer money?
Yes.
Okay. I think this community would have a hard time using taxpayer money to fix these places, but
Oh, yeah.
That's your decision to do. Any other questions on this side? Any questions on this side?
Seeking clarity, so what you're asking for tonight is whether or not we're going to maybe table this for a little bit longer, for two weeks, or whether we're going to move forward with as is presented? Help me understand what the...
Well, I know, John, my understanding was to bring the conversation to the table. I don't think the parliamentary process is to table it because that kills it. So you...
It would be, yeah, it would be a set aside. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a difference between tabling and set aside. So if you don't want to take action tonight...
Yeah, you can set it aside.
You set it aside.
Until you either get, like, you know, and come back in two weeks, give you a little bit more of an opinion about the right of entry and inspection, if that's one issue. And then you can decide if you want it amended. You can set it aside again if you want to do it. It's just there was a lot of questions about it and I know John, he needs to get something drafted. So you don't have to do a first reading tonight.
But you, but we table, you can table it and say for two weeks and that's not definitely...
It would set aside. There's a difference. I learned, I learned there's a difference.
Okay.
It's a set aside.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a big problem with abandoned buildings. I mean, we have to deal with this. Maybe this is not perfect, but I think this is a good starting point to have a conversation. Maybe this is not what we end up with, but let's get this out in the community and let's talk about it and let's come to a decision and do what we can do from the city's standpoint. That would be my input.
It's an issue. It's kind of like the homeless. It's high time we talk about it. It's out there. There's neighbors that are living next to these places and that's a concern. You've got, anybody that's in that building is not doing anything good. They're doing something not so good. They need to sort of recognize that. And the cold, hard reality of it is, these vacant properties typically are for a long time. There may be an exception, as Victoria mentioned, about something caught up in an estate, but it's generally people that don't give a damn about robbing their neighbors. So whatever you do is going to have to be a little bit of a nudge. You're not going to get this with just sugar. You're going to have to put a sour ball in there a little bit, too. So however you do that is your prerogative, but I think that's where council needs to start from. Do you or don't you want to solve the problem with vacant buildings? And if the answer is yes, you're going to have to take a step.
I, I really feel like this is a great step in the, in the right direction. We have to hold individuals accountable. You know, our job is to take care of the health, the safety and the welfare of our community. I truly appreciate the fact that there are at least two conditions that have to be met. I think that helps with clarity because there could be situations, you know, if you have a shed in your backyard that needs work, you can make your way through it. I think we're headed in the right direction. Our community keeps talking about some of the problems we have, and unless we start addressing them, we'll just keep talking about them. This is a prime example of a problem we have. You know, last, at the last council meeting, there was a significant amount of discussion about the word homeless. But the truth of the matter is, we need to deal with some of the other problems that we have, and this is one that could prevent some of the problems we're dealing with. So I, I feel like we need to make sure that we put the wording the way that we like, that is appropriate, and move forward.
I just had a question about the abandoned structures. If there's any way to differentiate between commercial versus residential? Because for some of these places, I mean, if the fines are the same, I would just, based on the size of the properties, I just feel like maybe that might be something we can look into.
Well, the law, and it surprised me, but the law doesn't give us any latitude. So it's not like we can charge 200 for residential and we can go unlimited for commercial with multiple dwelling units. It states that the maximum is 200 dollars and it's semi into a period. So there are charter cities that I think have more flexibility and they can adopt something that would be specifically applied to commercial based on square footage and all kinds of things, but this law doesn't allow that.
So my other thing, for people who own like a large abandoned structure, a $400 fee is not going to mean anything to that person. Does this also open up some other legal ramifications that we can then use to help implement some change?
Keep in mind, Mariah, this is basically limited to residential. So I don't know how your definition of large is, but we're not talking about what's on the corner of 72 as being applicable. So this is essentially going to be homes.
So I mean, we still have a problem we have to address then beyond this.
Right. But this is not going to do it.
This deals with the residential only. We need to deal with the other component, do we not? Do we not have provision that could allow us, as you're stating, to bring in commercial?
That's a...
Is that a separate action item? I mean, is that a separate ordinance? Or what are we looking at here? Because that's, that's the predominant. I mean, I, I wonder, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I would say some of the commercial buildings are a high priority as well.
They're bigger, better, and in more prominent locations. So you're absolutely right. If we, if we had a way to do that, I don't know, between John, Steve, and Carolyn, you know, we're essentially talking a place like on 72. I assume that's what we're talking about. Or the Howard Johnsons.
Correct.
There's a lot of complications, legal ramifications. So do one of you three want to hit the highlights on that?
Well, the only other provision in the statutes is the power to abate nuisances. And the council can, on commercial properties, go through the provisions that are in there and they can order it to be repaired or demolished. But in the failure to act by the property owner, the city becomes the one to abate that nuisance. And the reality is, the problem has been, there are commercial projects that are so big, the city can't put the dollars out there and then place the lien on the property. It could take years before we recover. So I'm not saying that that doesn't apply on everyone and it's a matter of putting priorities out there as far as funding. I'm not aware of anything that would allow us to do the same thing for commercial properties, but that's a legal question as much as anything else.
Since, since we're saying multi-dwellings, would that not consist of Howard Johnsons? Because it is...
I, I think it could. We'd have to have a legal opinion on that specifically. It's pretty, it's strange wording to say, "Commercial property approved by a structure containing multiple dwelling units."
And then you have Howard, or, and then you have AutoZone and there's two buildings there. It's the same property? It's the same deed from what I understand?
It's not multiple dwellings, it's dwelling units. So it's going to be, it's going to have a residential component to it.
Well, it kind of does right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's multiple dwelling.
But the question of hotels and motels is, is a, it's a strange one, the way they put the wording in here. And so it would have to be something that legal looked at. We've not seen other communities moving into the commercial side of it. So...
I would just like to say, by bringing all of this stuff and bringing awareness to abandoned buildings, because I've been bringing it up, you know, because I had an abandoned property catty corner from our house that we were dealing with. And by bringing these things up, things are happening. The house that is catty corner from us, they have decided to sell the property and now it's being remodeled. So almost 20 years of sitting there abandoned and now it's being remodeled and it's going to be this beautiful home. And AutoZone, they are slowly but surely making some sort of progress. I don't know where we'll end up with it, but if anybody's seen, they have started to do the abatement to get the asbestos out and they're starting to clear the brush there. And so, you know, we're, we're taking these baby steps in the right direction, but we're not going to do anything if we don't talk about it and do stuff like this.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we've got a couple of ways to go. One of them is to have the first reading to keep the process going, in which case you certainly don't have to take action tonight. You could come back in two weeks after you thought about it or citizen input or whatever. You could then propose modifications, addendums, what have you, and then take an action at that point. So having the first reading just keeps the process going. Doesn't take away any of your decision-making capabilities. So with that, can we have the first reading?
An ordinance enacting a new Article 7, section 6 through 61 through 6 through 70, relating to the adoption of a residential property registration program.
Claims to end our fiscal transactions. We have one, and one is a motion to award a bid for bank deposits.
Good evening. On June 30th, we received one bid for depository services for the city accounts. It was for First State Community Bank, which is the current location for our banking services now. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to award banking depository services to First State Community Bank for the next four years, which would expire in 2025. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Stephanie?
I'm just curious why no one else put a bid in?
From the feedback that I received, they're actually making more money doing bank loans, not depository services. So that's kind of the flip of the market compared to several years back.
It's also a lot of work to transition. So from the bank standpoint, a lot of account signatures, then seven to four years later.
Who's the client with you?
Same company.
I know I sign a lot of them. How many bank accounts do we have, Stephanie? Do you always remind me?
Forty interest-bearing and three non-interest-bearing.
Okay. So that gives sense of the workload, so. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to award the bid to First State Community?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you record Deanne's? All those opposed signify by saying no. Did Deanne vote?
She responded yes.
How did she vote?
She responded yes.
Moving on to open citizen communication. Is there anyone that like, would like to speak to city council? Please come forward. I don't want anybody to get mad at me. Is there anybody behind the post? No? Okay. Moving on to mayor, city council comments. We have a couple of reappointments and appointments. Let me start with those. The first is a reappointment of Dr. Scholwalter to the Ralla Board of Public Works. Is there, with your consent, we would like to make that a reappointment. Is there a motion for such?
Motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next one is a reappointment of Keith Strassner to the Ralla Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The third one is an appointment of Fred Stone to the Move Ralla Transportation...
TDD.
Move Ralla TDD.
TDD. That's a four-member board and the university had a representative on there who has retired in the past month. And they are requesting that replacement would be Mr. Stone, who, his bio is in your packet. Is there a motion to appoint?
Make a motion.
Motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We have one that was added late and that would be another reappointment, and that would be the reappointment of Dr. Janice Martin to planning and zoning.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for those. Last item is councilwoman Victoria would like to talk about the COVID emergency declaration.
So I had been asked by several constituents if this was still in effect recently, and several of them have told me they would like to see it be removed. And I had found out through the mayor and Mr. Batts that it's still in effect for the city until the state's emergency declaration is over or unless we decide to take action early and get rid of it beforehand. Now, I would just suggest maybe we need to consider getting it on the agenda and rescinding it early, at least from my constituents. I don't know about anyone else's constituents, if they heard anything about this.
Yeah, putting it on the agenda, I think council would be effectively asking us to prepare ordinance. So if that's, if that's what the majority of the body wants, that would be the direction. So in the next council meeting, we would have an ordinance for you to review, first reading, second reading, the whole nine yards.
What's the date that it expires? Isn't it fairly soon?
August 31st.
Yeah.
That's the governor's declaration. With numbers creeping up, I'm not so sure he won't extend that, but typically in the last six months, when the governor's issued an amendment, he's doing it at the very last minute. So we may not know until late August whether his intention was to extend it beyond...
And ours expires August 31st?
No, ours ties it to the governor's declaration.
Gotcha, okay.
And timeline-wise, if we go through the process, prepare the ordinance and your readings, you're essentially going to be taking action maybe a week, 10 days, eight weeks.
Right before it, yeah. That's what I was thinking.
So we just need some direction from council on what you would like us to do.
I think we just write it out because if it's going to take that long to get everything in process anyway, and you've got another week, it's a lot of work for...
Yes, Terry.
If he does extend it and we rescind it earlier, then would we have to go along with that or would we have to vote again to say, yes, we're going to go along with what the state says? If he were to rescind it, if he were to extend it and we already said we want to get rid of it, then we wouldn't have to initiate again unless we voted on that.
Right. We don't have to follow the governor.
What the governor does. Okay.
So I, I don't know. Why don't we do a show of hands? Who would like us to prepare the ordinance to make the change before its normal expiration date? Okay, so three people would like us to prepare that. So that's nowhere near a majority. So I think our suggestion would be to just write it out, or I think that's what you're telling us. Okay, any other council comments? Comments for the good of the order? I do want to talk a little bit about COVID. Most of you see in the news, COVID's not gone. The city of Springfield hospitals are full. They are shipping patients out to Columbia and elsewhere. They are out of ventilators. Most of the data would suggest that the number of cases are impacting the people that have not gotten vaccinations. Locally, our numbers have jumped. This is a, this is a graph of active cases since we started to track it back in the spring of last year. And you can see it has taken up a bit of a sharp upturn. The data from the Health Department is that those cases in Ralla or in the county, which currently number about 100 active cases, consist of three of the COVID variants. The sewer shed, which you've heard us talk about before, that is the state monitoring the effluent from various treatment plants around the country. The most recent sampling has indicated that 95% of the COVID positives in the effluent are the Delta virus. Phelps Health, as of this morning, now has 17 admitted in the hospital, five in ICU and one on a ventilator. In the county, the largest increase of cases is those in the 30 to 40-year-old category, presumably because they are the least numbered that are vac, vaccinated. The Health Department has reported that there have been 36 breakthrough cases, which means someone had COVID and/or the vaccine. And 20% of the county population in long-term, treat, long-term care centers are not vaccinated. Vaccine rate in the county is about 30%, which is significantly lower than the state and the rest of the country. MSNT is starting to rethink their risk mitigation strategies for the fall. They were pretty much on course to remove all of those restrictions, but they are now putting a little bit of a watchful eye on the numbers. So, all this to really tell you that, which you already know, COVID has not gone away. For those that do not believe in vaccines, that's fine, that's your prerogative and your personal choice. But for those of those that do believe in vaccines, that perhaps just haven't taken the time to go and get one, you might want to, might want to consider that. Any other comments for the good of the order? Yes?
We have a meeting scheduled for the Ward Four to talk about Neighborhood Watch and some other issues, but primarily Neighborhood Watch. It'll be on July 13th, Thursday, at 7:30 PM at the Veterans Memorial Park. I would love to have some folks come out who are interested in participating. We're going to have a police officer out there, but I'd love to have some folks out that are interested in participating in Neighborhood Watch, or have other things that they want to discuss regarding the ward.
Sir?
Yes?
You said July 13th?
Did I not say it right?
That's Tuesday, not Thursday.
Well, it is. Thank you very much. I've been corrected. It's the 15th. Wow, thank you. That was a good save. July, it was originally the 13th, but I, that's where I got confused. July 15th, Thursday, at 7:30 PM, Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion.
And you thought the department heads were just sort of playing on their phones back there? They're paying attention, aren't they?
I think Deanne might have a call. Deanne, did you have a call?
Yes, go ahead, Deanne.
Hello, is it coming through?
Yep.
Hello? Hello, hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Sorry, it's not been wanting to work with me throughout the night. Just jumping off of what the mayor said, two of my immediate family members, biological family members, recently had COVID and did survive it. One of them, though, at one point in time, was so delirious from fever and constant fever that the hospital and ambulances were called. They were turned away from the hospital because the hospital in Marshfield, Missouri, smaller than here, in between here and Springfield, was full. And you have to be pretty much on the verge of death to be allowed in there, even if your fever is so high that it can cause brain damage, even if your symptoms are so severe that an ambulance will come out and have to perform services for you. If you are that bad, there are people being turned away in smaller towns than here and in Springfield again, too, which is larger than here. So, if you're not taking it seriously, take it seriously. Part of the reason I won't be coming into these in-person meetings is because the Delta variant is spreading, and I work in food service, and I don't want to be a carrier for it in any kind of way, even though I am vaccinated. I don't want to risk anybody who isn't getting vaccinated or cannot get vaccinated because of their immune systems. So, like the mayor said, do your duty. If you're not going to get vaccinated, then wear a mask and go back to, I guess, staying home so we all don't have to do it all over again.
Thank you. Mariah?
I'm also having a Neighborhood Watch meeting on July the 27th for Ward One. We're for sure getting the final details together, and I will have that at the next meeting and also on my Facebook page.
Let me get that. July 27th is yours?
Is it Tuesday?
Is it Tuesday? And the location?
It's going to be at the Park on the Bearwan area, working for sure on the pavilion.
Okay. Thank you. Lester?
Just want to acknowledge our standing Fourth of July celebration by the Lions Club that they put on this weekend. I've heard nothing but raves about that, and so we are lucky in the era that people don't want to volunteer to have the Lions Club and have a community come together for that event. It was spectacular.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, we do not have a closed session scheduled for tonight, so meeting adjourned.